If we're ready, let's, let's begin. I've got six o'clock here. You guys may have a different number, but six o'clock it is. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start out by taking a roll call for attendance and please just respond that you're, you're here. Bob Britnall, here. Brenda?
Here.
Anna?
Here.
Katie?
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Okay. According to the MSBA, the pledge of allegiance is optional unless you're absolutely present here, but we will stand and announce the, and say the pledge. If you're so inclined to join us, please do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. Okay. Here we go. I would look for an approval of the agenda. Jeff, did you have anything to add to it?
I did not.
Okay. So I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
On Katie and second?
Second.
Second Anna? Roll call vote. Everybody in a, in agreement for the agenda as shown. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. We're going to do this several hundred times this evening, so just be ready. Schedule presenters. Tim Hodges is going to speak to us about grading, high school grad updates, and whatever else he has for the cause. Tim, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. First, I talked with our admin team about this last week and I'd just like to run this by you. Since our grading scale, our A, B, C, D, F, pass, fail grading scale is in my student handbook, I would like to get permission to change that grading scale for the distance learning that we're going through. And I'd like to propose that we change our grading scale to A, B, pass, fail, no credit, incomplete. So the reasoning behind that would be that students who want to continue to improve their grade point averages can do that by receiving As and Bs. And kids that are struggling with distance learning, if they get below that B level, it's not going to negatively impact their GPA because pass grades do not, are not counted into GPA calculation. So if a student received a pass or a fail, that would impact their credits towards graduation, but it would not impact their GPA. So that's, that's my first request is that, is that that be something to consider. The second is something that I've been thinking about since we started this whole distance learning process and before, when even when we were planning is what are we going to do if distance learning continues through the end of the school year and towards graduation? So I've been thinking a lot about this as have all Minnesota principals. I'm on just about daily email threads with the HHL principals. And even tomorrow, our MASSP Southeast Division is having a division-wide Zoom meeting to discuss what everybody's doing for graduation. So I think I have a good plan for graduation. I just wanted to run that by all of you for approval before we go any farther with that. And then if you guys approve of my plan, I will, I will communicate that with students and parents tomorrow morning, actually tonight after the board meeting's done. So I went down to Cannon Falls today. Been talking with Dave Peterson about options of possibly doing a graduation ceremony, maybe outside where we try to split everybody out as far away from each other as possible. We also talked about the field house and I think that we actually went down and mocked up chairs for the 88 graduates that we have. And we feel like we can, if we limit spectators at graduation to just two per graduate, either parents or whoever the families choose, we should be able to fit everybody in our field house without trouble. So we mocked up 88 chairs today, six feet apart, you know, both forward and back. And when we kind of planned out using the bleachers in the field house, plus the portable bleachers that get brought in for graduation every year, we feel like we've got plenty of room for, for our graduates, plus spectators, about 200 spectators, which is more than enough if we limit our commencement to just two people per, per student. We would not have a band or a choir perform during those times, but we would still have our class president give a welcome. And we'd still have our seniors elect two speakers for their class. So basically, our commencement ceremony would be the same as it normally would minus spectators and minus the music pieces of things. The, again, the layout will be a little bit different. You know, we normally have a pretty, pretty good spacing in our field, in the field house anyway. But we'll be spread out even farther this year, just to try to keep the social distancing in place. And again, we feel like we can have everything work just fine on Friday, the 29th, like we have planned at seven o'clock and do that, that ceremony inside. Inside just eliminates a lot of the, you know, the questionables about weather and what might happen if the weather's not good. So, so that's what I'd like to propose to the board and just get your ideas. If you've got any questions about anything, I'd be more than happy to answer those questions now.
Be able to livestream it for everybody else?
Yeah, I was hoping Mike Gesme would have gotten in a little bit sooner than he did today because I was going to ask him. So, you know, Mike usually records graduation. It's usually on the Cannon Falls access channel. But I think we can also livestream through Facebook Live and, and do that on YouTube and have a couple of different options for people who can't be in the field house to be able to watch graduations, the ceremony as it goes on.
Well, I would like to just say that I'm in favor of you doing it. I think that this sounds great. And I just really want to see these kids, these kids have been through a lot this year in the spring and have lost and had so many disappointments. And I just want to really see them celebrated and be able to walk, will they be able to walk across the stage? Or how will that, how will that look like?
Yeah. So that's something, there's some details there that we'll have to figure out. But one of the things that I wanted to talk with you about, and this would be a departure from normal, is probably on the stage might just be Mr. Sampson and myself. And instead of doing the handshaking, we would hand kids their diplomas. But we might, we'll have a separate place for a board to, to be at the ceremony if you wish to be, but obviously, you know, spread out so that nobody gets too close to each other. But then that would limit the number of people who, who have to be in close contact because the stage is only so big and, and you know, you kids kind of come in by, close to, you know, behind me and in front of, in front of Jeff during that ceremony anyway.
I think it's the best alternative we have, actually. And we certainly want those kids to be acknowledged. They've gone too far, too long to not have their day in the sun. Do it more. So.
Yeah, we're, you know, we also, one of the things we're missing too is our, why can't I think of the name of it right now? Our academic awards night where we announce scholarship winners. So Deb and I are working on a plan for that. That one will not be live, but we're, we're planning on something so that kids can still be recognized as scholarship winners and as our, our kids that have, have done well academically all year long, so they can be recognized that, that way too. That one, we're looking at more of a virtual kind of thing as opposed to, to getting people together. But I've, we've got some good ideas that if we can, if we can make it happen, I think will be a neat way to, to still not only recognize our kids, but get some of those people who provide those scholarships involved in that, in that process as well.
At the graduation, would you be able to have like pre-recorded music and played? Or the band's not meeting at all, right? So they wouldn't be able to perform?
No, band and choir aren't meeting really at all anyway. So we would have something, you know, we'd have, obviously, we'd have a recording of pomp and circumstance for the processional end and we're still planning on doing that. And we'd find something to do as a recess, as recessional music. We just wouldn't have that. You know, that's, that's one piece that'll be missing is our band and choir during that, that ceremony.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Okay. Um, I was just wondering, can, is faculty going to be there? Or would that be considered in like the ticket, like two persons, people per graduate?
It's something, I have a faculty meeting this week and I'm going to bring that up to, to staff and see what they want to do. You know, normally, all faculty are invited to, to be a part of those and they usually march in first. But with, if, if we open that up to all of our faculty like we normally do, we won't have room in the field house. Just, you know, when you consider we've got about 80 people on staff, both at the high school and the, and the elementary school. The way things are spread out right now for social distancing, we just, we'd run out of room to be able to do that. With that being said, there are some, there are some jobs that are going to need to be done as far as helping to manage crowds and to helping to manage, you know, making sure our graduates get where they need to go. So I will be asking for some staff that want to be a part of that to help out with that too.
Okay. Um, I also wanted just to ask about cap and gowns. I know we usually wear the choir robes, so I'm assuming we're still doing that. But I was just wondering if it would be at all possible. I know if we're only limited, allowed two people, like my aunts and my uncles will probably come to my house and watch the livestream or something like that. So is there a way that the graduates could have the cap and gown just beyond the ceremony, just to get pictures with family and then return it the next day? Is that something we could maybe work out or?
Yeah, I think we can probably figure something like that out. You know, what Deb and I talked about today was just trying to, normally, we ask graduates to come in like two hours before and we, and we have a practice session before commencement. I think this year, instead of doing that, we'll probably send something to you guys in written and we'll probably send a video where we're walking through what we want you to do. But as far as having your cap and tassel, that shouldn't be a problem. The robes, I don't think will be a problem either. We'll just have to work that out and make sure. Because one of the things we always do is at the end, we always want to make sure that we get our, our robes back since they are the schools. But we'll, we'll figure something out there.
Awesome. Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else like to make comment on the grad up, or the graduation ceremony itself?
If you'd like, I, I took a picture of what the student seating will be like and I can forward that to Lori Hansen and she can get that out to you. When we were setting up chairs, we were all kind of commenting on, wow, this seems like a very military kind of thing because, you know, normally, it's, it's pretty compact with our students and it feels pretty intimate. But with social distancing, that takes up a lot of room with, with 88 spaces when you're trying to keep them all six feet apart. So, but I'll, I'll send you that picture just so you can kind of get an idea. So just, just kind of as a general idea, you know, we're taking about a 10 or 12 foot space from the middle of the, of the middle court. And we go all the way out to the edge, a little bit inside the edge of the Court One and Court Three. So that just gives you an idea of how far out those rows are spread. So.
Hey, Tim, if the stay-at-home order happens to still be in place, have you heard anything from other high school principals, how that might affect it? Or is it just a wait and see?
You know, fortunately, we don't have too much longer to, we'll have to wait to see what happens with that. So everybody that I have talked to is still planning on holding a graduation ceremony at their, on their normal date, however they decide to do that. So I think we're really lucky that we have the field house so that we can hold our ceremony inside. A lot of schools are looking at doing something outside, which, which is fine. You know, it's great to have outside ceremonies. It's just what happens if the weather's not good. So, so we're lucky in that sense. But nobody has really said anything about changing the date of commencement or anything like that. So I think that if the governor extends the stay-at-home order through when we're supposed to have our graduation ceremony, then we'll have to look at maybe changing our commencement date to another time.
Okay.
Because I, I personally feel it's really important to have a ceremony for our kids. You know, I don't feel as bad about doing the, the scholarship presentations virtually. I absolutely would not want to do that with commencement.
Yep. Okay.
Can we back up a little bit and talk about the grading? I'm not sure if that takes a, a vote on our part or it does take a vote. We'll have to add that as an agenda item. Okay. Let's talk a bit about the grading and see however everybody feels about the, the one-year change that we would do.
Yeah, and it's really just for fourth quarter.
Does anyone have any comments, any sentiment either way that we should be discussing here?
So if it's a fourth quarter only, Tim, how do you work that for, you know, the average grade for the year? Then if they go to a pass, fail?
It's, it's really only something that impacts high school. Our middle school classes are, we haven't done a cumulative semester grade for the last several years there. So they get a grade per quarter and they start over. So it's really just our high school that we'll have to figure out. And again, I, I think what we'll end up doing is we'll take a look at, at those letter grades at third quarter and then where things are land during fourth quarter. And if a student had a C in a third quarter from a class and then a pass, then we'd probably extend that on as a pass for the semester grade. And that's something that we can also work with kids individually with too. So if they really want to take a letter grade on something, we can still do that kind of thing as well. We've always done pass, fail as an option for some of our kids, some of our special education students in conjunction with their IEP team. Sometimes we decide to have kids do a pass, fail grade as opposed to a letter grade. This would just extend that to beyond just those special ed kids and into our general ed kids too.
So now you said the pass, fail does not count towards graduation credits. Is that?
No, it, it'll count towards graduation credits. It would not count towards GPA.
Okay. Now I get it.
Yep. So, so for example, I, I mean, I'm kind of hearing anecdotally all over the board whether kids are doing well with distance learning or not doing well with distance learning. And some kids that we had expect to do well are struggling and some kids that we wouldn't have expected to do well are really thriving in this environment. So, um, so with that being said, you know, I want this distance learning to not negatively impact GPAs for kids if they don't want it to.
Okay.
A lot of the colleges made, did this option for kids as well. So like my son has the option in, in his college classes right now of choosing to, to do letter grade or pass, fail grading. You know, and he's been, he's been doing online classes as long as we've been doing distance learning now. So.
So, Tim, how do you see the timeline, you know, getting towards the end of this school year? Does the student have a conversation around that class and make the decision or, or how's that work?
Yeah, I think, I think really it's going to be a matter of, you know, working with staff and, and having kids and staff have that conversation about where they think they're going to end up. There, there will inevitably be some kids that are kind of right on the bubble that will have to make a decision which way they want to go. But in my mind, this kind of helps that situation out because if a kid is, you know, they're, they're in the bubble and they take a final and they don't do well. And it knocks them down to a negative or then it, it doesn't have any impact because they'll still get a pass. It just won't impact their GPA.
Yep. Okay. Anyone else? So we're really going to need a motion and a second to accept the recommendation from the admin on the, on their grading proposal for the fourth quarter.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Brenda. Second. Second by Bill. Other discussion. So a yes vote will indicate that you're supportive of the restructure or recommendation for the fourth quarter. Bob? Yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. That passes by a six, zero vote. Thank you for the time and effort you put into that.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Tim?
I'll keep you updated if anything else happens with commencement.
Okay. Public input. First of all, we should have recognized that people that are listening that have any questions or comments for public input, they can direct them toward Lori's email and we can get them taken care of before the end of our meeting. Procedurally, a little bit off, but that'll help us to continue the meeting plus take any input that people need. Lori's email would be Hanson.Lori@cf.k12.mn.us for anyone wishing to make a comment. Emma, do you have anything for the cause that you'd like to add at this point?
Well, I can tell you guys how distance learning is going, I guess. I didn't really write up a report. But, um, I, I can't really speak for other students. I can just speak for myself and my sister who's in seventh grade. And I know as distance learning has gone on, it's definitely gotten easier. Um, just with the adjustment at first, but now I think we've gotten a hold of things. Zoom meetings seem to be going well. I know they're usually the highlight of my day. I love seeing all my classmates. Um, so yeah, for me and my sister, it's going pretty well. So hopefully the same for other students. But I guess that's my report for tonight.
Anybody have anything they'd like to direct toward Emma? Okay, we'll move on to, for consideration for the finance report. Mr. Davison?
Bill or Bob? Hang on. I see Lisa with her hand up.
I'm raising my hand. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I have one, just one second to, I, and then I'm off to another Zoom in just a, a couple of minutes here. But I just want to speak on behalf of the 2020 seniors and their parents. So Emma, I hope I'm, that's okay, speaking on your behalf right now. But thank you for showing your support for having some sort of a traditional graduation ceremony. With all of the recent letdowns and missed opportunities that this class has had to endure, the news of an actual ceremony to celebrate their accomplishments will mean so much to them and to their parents. So thank you for showing your support for that. My next Zoom that I will be leaving you for, sorry to not stay and hang out for the rest of this meeting, but I am part of the senior class, or I'm sorry, the senior party committee. And obviously, or they've asked if I would come to you and just kind of throw it out there. What does this mean for plans with that? Obviously, the party committee is, first of all, waiting to hear what Governor Walz has to say. And if a party of some sort would fit into his regulations, we are looking at all sorts of different timelines, all sorts of different options. And just wondering what your thoughts are on moving forward with the senior party for these students.
Well, I think whatever, if, what, when you wait and see what, what the governor does and whatever you can figure out that would fit in that mold, I, I'm, I think that's great.
We just didn't know what kind of guidelines or if, if we needed, I don't know if permission is the right word or what we needed from, from the board. So I said I would ask and report back. So.
Can I, Jeff, do you have anything on that?
Being new this year, what does the senior party entail? I'm going to pull the new guy card on this one.
Sure. So the original plan before all of the uncertainties came past years and what was supposed to happen again this year is after graduation, the, after the graduation ceremony, they would start with, with a hypnotist at the high school. They would, so spend a couple of hours at the high school with a hypnotist, a magician, and then they would load onto a bus and go to Bolero, which is up in the cities. And they would, actually, the magician follows them up there too and continues with magic. We've, an assortment of food, there's games, activities, things up there at Bolero. It goes well into the night. The bus brings them home and then they are, and then that's it. So that is what it has looked like. The conversations with Bolero recently, within the past week, have been that they, you know, obviously are waiting to see what the governor says as well. As right now, they are not open. As far as, you know, social distancing goes, they have a lot of different rooms that could set up different options and limit the number of students in there. So they're willing to look at social distancing options. If that was not, you know, ultimately, we'd like to be able to give them what the original plan was. But at this point, I think everyone is okay with figuring out whatever we could do that could work. So other scenarios have been, you know, do we do some sort of a picnic with yard games? Do we do, do we incorporate the CCC somehow so we're not leaving town if buses are an issue? You know, we're, we're open to a lot of different ideas, but in the past, that is what it has looked like.
Yeah, I would be very supportive of doing something if the guidelines allow for it.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you, everyone.
All right. Okay. Moving on, the finance report. Josh, what do you have for us?
Yeah, just the one page, essentially cash flow, where the district's at right now. The caveat being, of course, with this is with the social distancing and change in revenue stream into the district. This would need to be updated if we were to see some actual guidance from MDE coming in on what we can expect and not to expect. So this is essentially what we would have got, assuming everything had gone the way it's supposed to. Up at top, you'll see our cash to balance as a day of the report, about $1.279 million in total cash and not a whole lot of extraordinary things that go in and out during the next month and a half. Normal ideas, payments coming in, normal payroll going out. There's a little bit higher payroll that would be typical in May 30th of paying spring coaches. That could be a little bit of a different number this year. Towards the middle bottom of the, the left side, you'll see the energy funds and those are actual dollars, the 110 and the, in the 210, those would be coming in as expected. The thing that's kind of a little bit up in the air right now in terms of timing of the funds, not if we'll receive the funds, but timing of it, will be the proceeds from the Goodyear and Dakota County tax payments at the end of May, beginning of June. Between those two payments is about $2.2 million roughly that'll be coming into the district. And you can see at our cash balance at the end of June being 2.4 million, 2.5 million roughly. If those tax receipts don't come in as. If those tax receipts don't come in as planned or scheduled, we'd be looking at doing some, may some aid anticipation borrowing. Uh, now they do say that all the escrow taxes will be paid on time, so I wouldn't expect a full 2.2 million dollar shortage. Where it's going to come in is the people that are paying taxes on their due date or, and or egg business that may be paying on the due date versus an escrow. Um, and until I get complete guidance from the county or MDE, I won't be able to plug in an actual number for there. So, uh, we'll just keep our relationships open with our local banks and with, um, the mint tab or the, uh, the mechanism that the school district have for borrowing short-term cash, uh, if needed. Uh, if everything goes as scheduled, we won't have a need for that. Uh, but there could be an issue with that. Um, the other thing just typical to talk a little bit about the finance part is I know there's a resolution later on the night about transferring funds, uh, between funds and the ability to be able to do that will be great for the district. Uh, the issue may be in that changing from funds, uh, food service and community are generally really, uh, revenue-based funds. So if we're not getting revenue from Canon Kids preschool and whatnot coming into the community fund, uh, it's real hard to keep that fund solvent when payments are still going out. Likewise with food service. Uh, we are getting everything funded as it comes in as you, whether it may be a summer food program, but we're not serving the number of meals that we are on a daily basis as when schools in session and the bodies are in the building. So, uh, there'll be some question marks and some, uh, some stuff in the area that we still got to figure out between our guidance with the MDE and what the county has, but uh, as of right now, if things were to hit refine cash flow rise, I think it's just important for us to be, uh, prepared if that doesn't come in and we do need to do some short-term borrowing. Uh, the key with that is aid anticipation borrowing, I mean, aid anticipation borrowing, excuse me, means just that the aid is going to come eventually and send in anticipation of that. So rates are very low, um, and banks are generally pretty good about, uh, loaning on those needs if, if need be. It's not anything that we would do borrowing for, uh, for other extraneous items. It's just simply for our day-to-day needs. Um, but it's just a good idea that, and for you guys to have that communicated to you as well, that that may be a possibility. If you have any questions, I'll, I can do my best to answer.
Certainly, we've made some, uh, gains in our fund balances as we discussed at last meeting or the week, meeting before, but the pandemic has probably eaten away at some of that.
Yeah, and, you know, we're still going to get, uh, majority of funding from MDE, you know, that the governor said that that's not going to change. It's the fee-based programming that is going to be hit the hardest. Uh, we can usually see between, uh, you know, 40 to $60,000 depending on the month, uh, from items like preschool and Canon Kids. Those funds aren't coming in because of the governor's directive to, uh, offer that childcare at no cost for the tier one, tier two. Um, but we still have the expense of that program. So, um, by the governor saying that we can, you know, cross funds and make transfers if needed, that's great. As we know, our general fund is not seeing at the, uh, most healthier percentages, but there's a little bit of movement in there, you know, the general fund is our main fund, um, whereas community has a little more secondary. Uh, food service is the same when both budgets showed as we did last, uh, meeting for the revised show that, you know, real small fund balances in both of those funds, food service and community ed. Um, but without as much revenue coming in, it'll be hard to just predict exactly where it's going to be without having the guidance from MDE.
Uh, other questions for Mr. Davison?
Josh, I had a question concerning the taxes, uh, you know, so say we, we only get 90% of the, the taxes expected. So the, the 10%, we have to kind of plan for aid anticipation. So what would be the general idea of a timeline that we would potentially recover though that 10% or is there some justification there that we would be able to work with?
Yeah, so, uh, I don't know, I don't mean, I think we think of the, the 90, 10%, we're talking, uh, more of funds, funding from the state. Uh, they're the ones that'll hold back 10%. We get 90% of the current year and then afterwards we get our 10% back. Uh, with the county taxes, that's paid on the due dates. Uh, I guess what I would look at, you know, as long as we're getting at least 50% of our tax funding, uh, I think we're going to be okay and not have to do any anticipation borrowing. The governor said that the state's going to, fully fund their commitment to education. So we should see all the funds coming in from the state. It's the levy side, the tax side that, uh, the counties are kind of going to, you know, we've got all sorts of people not being able to work. They don't have funds coming in hard enough to make a mortgage payment, much less, uh, tax payment. Uh, that there may be some relief given in that area. And if that were to happen, you know, what's it going to look like to your school district if you didn't get full tax funding on those dates? Um, you know, as it sits now, as long as we're getting 50% or better, I think we're okay not having to borrow. Uh, if it gets below that, I think we'd have to be pretty cautious on where rather our, our cash flow be pretty, pretty thin.
Pretty thin.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as discussed. So moved. Moved by Bill, second.
I'll second.
Second by Katie. Any other discussion? Um, a yes vote will mean that you approve the finance report as discussed. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. That passes by a six zero. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any one item, it can be removed for a separate action. Um, first, Jeff always likes to, uh, discuss and thank the people for the donations.
Yes, thank you, Bob. Uh, first of all, we'd like to thank the Cannon Falls Education Foundation for, uh, an $1,800 donation right off the bat when we went into distance learning to help us with internet access, hotspots for families. Uh, we also have um, quite a few people making masks for us to help us in, uh, the school district here to help our, uh, required workers that need to come in every day to, to serve food and for childcare. And that is Missy Clapper, Peggy Decker and Shannon Scherz. And they've done wonderful job of supplying us with all sorts of masks and follow-up with us to make sure that they're fitting properly and if they can make any, uh, accommodations into their pattern. So I am very happy and graceful, uh, grateful for, for those three, uh, for helping us through this time as well. Invenergy also donated $1,500, uh, to our food service to help us, uh, keep up with our food supply and feeding the, the, the children of the district as well. So thank you to all of our uh, donors for this month.
Thank you. Please just take a moment if you'd like to look over the minutes, uh, any personnel items that you'd like to have discussed or, uh, approval of the monthly bills, please just take a second to look things over.
One of the things I also want to mention in the personnel is, uh, Deb Clegg is retiring after 35 years of service to the district and we'd like to recognize her, uh, for her service to the district and to the kids of the district.
A hard person to replace.
Yeah, she's done an amazing job.
When you're ready for a motion, I would look for one. Um, again, you can take your time and look at the minutes and such if you need to.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
That's Brenda speaking, right? Brenda, on the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Larry? Any other discussion? So a yes vote would mean approval of the consent agenda as shown. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. That passes by a six zero vote. Moving on, under old business, we have none showing. So new business superintendent report for April 27th.
Thank you. Um, I just got a couple of different items here. We're kind of in a holding pattern, obviously, on a lot of different things because of COVID, waiting for the governor to give us, if he's going to let us out of the lockdown that we are currently in, uh, right now. So a lot of the update Tim talked about with graduation and greeting as we have a little bit more, guidance on that particular issue, knowing that we are not back, uh, for the rest of the school year, but feel pretty confident that, that graduation will be able to hold that in person. Um, I, I do want to thank the, the staff, uh, all over the district for their continued excellence in the implementation of distance learning and all the support that is provided to our students, uh, throughout the school year. So thank you again to staff, uh, and all of their roles for that. Uh, finally, the strategic plan, I've updated some dates and I want to run them past my admin team, uh, this coming week and I plan on bringing that back to the board for your review again because some of the items on there have been postponed or pushed back for the time being, uh, until we get through, uh, some of these COVID items and we have a better idea when we can start, uh, pushing forward with, uh, completing those items as well. So you can expect that next month. Other than that, that is all I have unless you have questions.
So, under the discussion banner, so if it, no, no questions for Jeff, we'll move forward. Consideration to approve the resolution regarding fund balance transfers.
Yes, this is a resolution which would allow us, Josh referred to it earlier, uh, the flexibility necessary to transfer funds from certain programs that we are not already assigned to or encumbered by staff salary and benefits or otherwise encumbered by federal law and does not impact tax, uh, taxes for the following purposes, to provide care to eligible children during the school day and to pay additional transportation costs incurred between March 30th, 2020 and April 30th, 2020 needed to implement the executive orders and providing distance learning instruction. So basically this resolution will allow Josh to make those transfers and we will communicate what transfers have been made between the different funds of the district at a later time.
Questions for Jeff?
Not a question, it's, it's pretty much laid out by the governor, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I'll move to approve.
Moved by Bill. Second.
I'll second.
Second by Katie. Other discussion? Katie, do your thing.
I know, I'm trying to figure out what I read. Um, just read the
I thought there was a paragraph down there at the bottom.
Do I just do the, whereas the school board of Cannon Falls? Do I have to read all of the? Paragraph 21 and then A and B. So I have to read the paragraph 21? Yeah. Okay. Resolution regarding fund balance transfers, whereas Minnesota Governor Tim Walz issued emergency as executive order 2019 on March 25th, 2020, which stated in part, paragraph 21, upon approval by the executive council, school districts and schools are authorized to transfer operating funds from certain programs that are not already assigned to or encumbered by staff salary and benefits or otherwise encumbered by federal law for the following purposes. A, to provide care to eligible children during the school day. B, to pay it, trans, pay additional transportation costs incurred between March 30th, 2020 and April 30th, 2020 needed to implement this executive order in providing distance learning instruction. Whereas a fund transfer is allowed if the transfer meets the criteria set forth in paragraph 21C of emergency executive order 2019. Do you want me to read all of those?
Good enough.
So we need a roll call vote. I have to get your, all your names in front of me here. All right, Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie, yes? Bill?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six zero vote. Thank you. Consideration to approve the 2020 through 2025 managed print services proposal.
Uh, our printing contract is up with EO Johnson and so we asked for, um, quotes from three different companies. And we received these three different companies, uh, from EO Johnson, Riverbend and Toshiba Direct. And the administration went through a process and it was kind of a long, arduous process as it is with printing because there isn't anything simple about it. Um, but we are coming back and advising that we go with Toshiba Direct, uh, with, which is the third option from the left for $1,567.95 per month. We feel that this is the best option in weighing out all of the different options for those printing. Uh, the printing bids that we got.
Questions? We're taking the low bid, in other words, right?
Yes, and it's actually a very good bid. It meets all of our needs.
Okay. If we have no questions, I would look for a motion. We can discuss it as, as you need after the second.
I'll make a motion to approve the managed print services con, proposal. Toshiba Direct.
Yep, motion by Katie.
Second.
Second by Anna. Now, other discussion?
The only, the only question I have is service model. It's always an issue with these types of things. I hope that's kind of part of the review.
It was, um, and if Josh wants to chime in here also if I forget something, but in that model, we ask all three companies to give us what they have for a service model. And, uh, one of the banks here in town actually uses Toshiba Direct and they have always been at two hours or less, which is what EO Johnson was that we're used to dealing with as well. And so, uh, you know, it's always a little scary changing companies like that to make sure that you actually, uh, they follow through with you the way they follow through with other people, but with the bank, they were very confident about that, so.
Yeah, having them in town will be helpful too.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
It has been kind of a long process. EO Johnson, um, a lot of you would know the, the history with the copiers, but they've been great the last five years and the service, we didn't really notice until this last year and a half or so, when the machines start to get to the end of their lifecycle and they're here a lot more often. Uh, and they were, and they were on in a very, very timely fashion. Um, and Toshiba has a, a similar track record, at least from the part that we, we have checked out. Uh, when you see the included paper cut, this is a, a management, so we'll be able to manage better the number of copies that are going out, uh, staff and using the devices. Um, the, the thing to kind of note with the Toshiba one is that 1567, a lot of months could be less depending on the number of copies that are used. So it shouldn't be higher than that amount. And, and the real good thing in terms of our district financially is, uh, the contractor coming off of was about $2,200 per month, uh, in cost. Uh, this at 1,600 roughly, uh, saves us about $7,500 a year and almost $35,000 over the, the course of the contract. So, um, should have less copiers going, less copies going through, less paper being bought and save the district, uh, quite a bit of funds over the time of it. So all in all, I think it's a good deal for the district.
And one of the thing, biggest things also, especially in the type of learning that we are in right now, um, we're, we're almost expecting to have less paper going out after experiencing distance learning. Uh, at this point, there should be different avenues and efficiencies that we hopefully develop as a staff moving forward.
Sure. So color copies typically are the expense. So, you know, that's where you kind of have to watch your, your number count.
Yeah, so there's, you know, when they make, make their bids, there's a, a number of color copies built into it. Anything above that with the Toshiba, uh, obviously the color copy is costs much more per copy than the, the black white toner ones, but having this paper cut on there, we can set limits on how many color or black white copies each individual gets. And when they get to that number, they're shut off and they have to be allowed to have more copies and, and put in there and they'll know where they're at, where they're at to their balance. So it hopefully reduce some of that kind of frivolous copying or just off. Uh, the other thing that's nice with the paper cut will have a badge, so you don't run off copies until you get Off. The other thing that's nice with the paper cut will have a badge, so you don't run off copies until you get to the device itself. And with having so few devices in centralized locations, a lot of times, you know, we hit print twice or three times because we forgot if we printed or not. We don't want to walk down there to make sure we get, and we get down there and there's extra copies at the machine, so now you have to actually badge in to release the copy. So there'll be less copiers just by that fact too.
Be better security for special needs, case work and stuff like that as well for privacy.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the low bid of Toshiba for our managed print services for the 2025. So a yes vote would be to approve that low bid. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to approve the 2021 school and student fees, including a meal price increase of 10 cents.
Yeah, that's, that is one of the increase that we are recommending for meal prices and then also for technology insurance increasing from $25 to $40. A lot of the schools in the HBL, if not all of them, are up around $40 or higher for the technology insurance. At this point, we feel that that would be appropriate.
And activity fees, how have they changed?
I, we haven't made any activity fee changes at this point.
No, those look the same, 125 per participant and 650 family max.
Questions? Comments? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the school and student fees for the upcoming year, which include a 10 cents per meal increase.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion?
Well, I think historically, we've had to keep our prices moving up. Yeah, I think this is the second time we, we've moved on the lunches already. And the, the question as far as being, keeping the food service in line, I think it's necessary, so.
Yep. It's still a deal at 280 and 270 per meal. So a, a yes vote will include the, the increase plus the approval of all the fees. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Let's have some good news here. Consideration to approve the 2021 1.0 FTE associate principal contract for Steven Strauss.
Yes, we commenced a group of, to interview and we ended up interviewing five people, I believe, that day in this, in this position. And Steven was the unanimous choice by the interview group, and so we are recommending to hire Steven Strauss for this position.
A familiar name, familiar name to us all, huh?
Yeah.
Tim, any comments there?
I think Steven's going to do a great job.
Okay, any questions or comments on this proposed hire? If not, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion for, I'll second.
Was that Anna on the motion? Katie on the second, right?
Yep.
Okay. Other discussion?
Well, I think it's important to note, this is part of our whole plan with the cuts and the movement around, you know, to have this, this role and take on more responsibility.
Yes, yep, that is exactly true.
Anyone else? So a yes vote will be the approval of Steven Strauss. Larry? Yes. Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes unanimously. Number five, consideration to approve the 2022 community ed and athletic activity director contract for Reed Olson.
Yes, with Jake's resignation, we commenced an interview group and we interviewed four candidates for this position and Reed was the unanimous choice of the group. So we recommend Reed Olson for this position.
We, uh, we know Steven Strauss, we know his history. We don't know a lot about Reed. Can you enlighten us at all?
Sure. Actually, Reed is joining us tonight somewhere on here if I can find him. His name is on there anyway. Reed has been an activities director, well, for over a decade now. He comes to us from Kingsland most recently, and he's teaching in Hayfield and he's the A D at Kingsland. Uh, he's been in Leroy Ostrander and Lyle as an activities director and he did some community ed work in Leroy Ostrander as well. And very experienced, hardworking, does great things for kids.
There has been a, a licensure issue in the long ago for Cannon Falls where we actually had to borrow someone else's license and act on that. Can you speak, is Reed a C E person as well?
Reed isn't currently licensed and so we are going to send him back to get licensed and in the meantime, we will have to engage with another district for that help. You had mentioned that Cannon Falls did engage with Red Wing a few years ago for that help until they got a licensed person in staff here as well. So very confident within the next year, maybe a little bit longer, Reed will get up to speed and, and be licensed as well.
Questions or comments? I would look for a motion to approve. We can discuss after the second if you wish.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Brenda. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Katie. Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? Okay. A, um, a yes vote would be for the approval of Reed Johnson in the dual role of activities director.
Reed Olson.
Reed Olson.
Well, okay. Hey, part be it for me to make it through a whole meeting without some kind of to okay the contract for Reed Olson for the dual role of community ed and athletic activity director. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes. Welcome aboard. And who did I say we who? Oh geez. Close enough. Except.
We'll hold that against you later.
Consideration to approve the 2021 1.0 FTE Spanish teaching contract for Corin Kriegel Falls.
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Tim probably for the next few here as well, so.
Tim?
Hi, um, yeah, we interviewed a couple of different candidates for this position and we're happy with both candidates, but Corin seems like she's going to bring really good energy and she's got some really great ideas. She's been in a few, a couple of different school districts before with different experiences, both small and big districts, so she's looking forward to being part of Cannon Falls staff.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, Katie.
Teaching contract.
Katie on the motion, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion? Okay, a yes vote would be for the approval of Corin for the upcoming school year on the teaching contract. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
That passes six zero vote. The next one, a consideration to approve the 2021 1.0 FTE middle school, high school math teaching contract for Mike Millerburn. Tim?
I defer to Tim again.
Yeah, I was, I was happy at the number of applicants that we had for math. We interviewed, I had interviews set up with four people and we ended, ended up interviewing three. As one of them took a position between when we had the interview set up. And Michael is, uh, he is a math major who turned into a math education major, so he's got a really good background and I think he'll fit nicely with our staff.
Okay, look for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Brenda? On the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Larry? Other discussion? Okay, a yes vote would indicate that you're voting for the approval of Mike's contract for the upcoming year. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to approve the 2021 1.0 FTE science teaching contract for Paul.
Sanchel.
Sanchel, just like it sounds. Okay, speak to us, Tim.
Yes, science is a little trickier than the other two positions just because science licensure in Minnesota is broken out into different fields. But Paul is going to come to us with, he's a Minnesota, or excuse me, he's a Wisconsin Stevens Point grad, so he comes with a kind of a, a general science, middle school license and we'll be working on getting him licensed for a high school position that he needs to, to do too.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve Paul's contract.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Katie? Second? Anyone?
I'll second.
Seconded by Anna? Any other discussion?
Tim, I think we've gone through the, the science waiver before and so that's kind of following that same process, I would assume.
Yeah, so Paul will have a, he'll start with a tier two license, wh- which is what a lot of grads that get their teaching out of state end up getting to start with. So he'll have some Minnesota tests to take and then he'll have the licensure piece for Earth and Space Systems that he'll, he'll get taken care of at another time too. So he'll start off with a tier two license, but he should be at a tier three probably by the end of next school year.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to second on the floor. A yes vote would mean we are approving Paul. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Excuse me. Consideration to approve Madeline Suddenheim and Mary Wurtjes as Cannon Falls Community Ed Foundation Board members.
Yes, the, the Ed Foundation bylaws require the Cannon Falls School Board to approve all new Ed Foundation Board members. And I would like to recommend both of these staff members and thank them for their service, actually, for volunteering as well.
Move to approve.
Brenda on the move?
I'll second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion? A yes vote means the approval of these new members to the Ed Foundation. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a six zero vote. So the person that we haven't heard from all night is Jen, so I was just going to plug in. You've been very dutifully quiet this evening. As directly to you, anything you'd like to add for the cause, Jen?
No, I would just like to say I'm also excited for Steven to be in an administrator role as a K-12 associate principal, so I'm excited for that. And excited to have a little assistance in my building as well. And just a shout out to my teaching staff who are continuing to kind of amaze me as the weeks go on. So I think it's pretty exciting how they've embraced it. But that's it.
Thank you. Emma? I'm just going to give you one more shout out here. You've probably got another meeting for us before the, before your tenure ends.
Yeah.
So, thank you for everything you do. Is there anything you'd like to input at all once more?
Um, yeah, I would just like to, um, say thank you to you guys and Mr. Hodges and everyone who's made, pushed for an in-person ceremony. It is a really big deal to us seniors and I know it's super special, so I really appreciate that. And like I said earlier, distance learning has been going great, but that wouldn't be possible without all of our awesome teachers, so thank you to them too.
Top to bottom, we appreciate all of our staff in whatever roles they play for us because they've really made this as good as it can possibly be. So thank you to all. Informational meetings, you see that we continue to be busy. The upcoming has several things for you to review. If there's anything that you feel there's a need to add on to the board agenda, please contact Jeff or Lori and we'll see if we can get it on. Um, anybody have anything for the cause before we close? Okay, having heard nothing, I would look for a motion to approve adjournment.
I'll make the motion.
Anna on the motion, seconded by whom?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Somehow this is always our longest one. I would think you'd all want to jump ship right away. So we have a motion, the second, any other discussion? Those in favor of adjournment, Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Thank you all. We're getting better at this. Thank you for the, the support from our staff as well this evening, so.
Thanks for the, Bob.
Motion and second to adjourn. We are finished. Have a good night, everybody.
Night.
Night.
Good night.